Good evening and welcome to the May 14th City Council meeting and public forum. And we will begin with the public forum. Welcome, everybody. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I will call two names at a time and the second person can sit in the chair waiting for their turn and that way it goes quickly. We actually have 16 people speaking tonight in the public forum. And first up is Randall Seerly, followed by David Larson.
My name is Randall Curley. I am from Silverton, Oregon. I represent TNT Fireworks as the area manager over Eugene. I'm going to be speaking about fireworks that's on the docket tonight. We've been here before. You know, we were here at the November meeting, we were here at the October meeting, talking about fireworks in the city, fireworks, all the different things that go into fireworks. And I think that the main point that I want to get through tonight is that, number one, that when we think of fireworks, we're not necessarily thinking of the groups that are going to be affected by this ordinance going through. And I know in the past that there's been statements said that, well, those groups just need to find different avenues for raising funds. That's not always the case, though. That's not always the case for a group to find other avenues that are as easy and lucrative as fireworks, that can gain them the abilities to send kids to camp, send low-income families food during the holidays that they wouldn't have, boxes of food. Fireworks is an amazing opportunity for that. Myself, I've done both sides of things. I was a pastor for 20-plus years who has ran fireworks tents. I've run every fundraiser there is under the sun, and fireworks is a great way to do this without having all the other problems that come along with it. If you guys vote tonight to restrict the dates, restrict the noise, it's going to drastically affect their abilities to raise the funds that are necessary. And frankly, they're unenforceable, as we all said before. We're already overburdened with everything that is going on with what the police department, the fire departments are doing, that to add another ordinance of already all these other ordinances, that they don't have the time to take care of as it is. So we're just putting more burden on them to do something that they know they can't, they just can't enforce. And so, from my perspective, please, please choose not to take action tonight, not to vote for any of the ordinances, just let it stay as is and let our people be able to raise those funds necessary to do what they need to do in their communities, because this is going to affect communities. This is going to affect small business in a way that we can't know. You can't know how it's going to affect the small businesses. And thank you for the time that you've given me. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David Larson, followed by David Ivan Piccioni.
Hi, my name's David Larson. I'm talking fireworks and I'm from the city of Eugene. As a consumer standpoint of it, it would be really confusing to see that the city of Eugene puts a band on it when the city of Springfield's right there. And having people traveling through either city, they can see a stand on the side of the freeway, stop there, pick up fireworks, and then not even know if they can set them off in the city, if they're coming through Eugene or saying Eugene, so on and so forth. And then city lines and stuff like that, it's to be able to have people come through the city randomly, nobody's going to know whether or not they're going to be able to set them off within city, if they're in city, out of city, or where they're at, all they're going to know is, oh, I'm in Eugene. I can set them off because I don't see anything on not setting them off. I think it'd be a wonderful thing. Kids have fun with them, kids like the colors, so on and so forth. And to be able to purchase them where you want, if someone works in Springfield, purchases them out there and comes home, sets them off to their kids, or like I said, someone traveling, going through the city, how are they supposed to know? Thank you for your time and have a good evening, guys.
Thank you. David Ivan Piccioni, followed by Stefan Streck.
Hi, David Ivan Piccioni, Eugene. Yeah, I want to follow up on the work session that was earlier when the police officer was talking about installing cameras in situations where a crime could happen. And this makes a lot of sense because you want to get as much perspective as you can from what happened. But what I do want to, what my emphasis is on, it actually is, on the cameras not being able to be turned off by the cops. Because sometimes when the cops are doing something funky, they turn off the cameras and you don't see them. I'm wearing my Democracy Now! shirt every day on Monday to Friday. They talk a lot about, it's a little heavy on the liberal side, but I enjoy it. And they show a lot of crimes committed by cops, shooting people and then putting the gun next to the guy, and the cops then get a promotion, and they get a desk job, or you know, they aren't held to as strict a standard of accounting as everybody else. So I wanted to talk about the animals, but that's, I have to wait for that, right?
The dog licensing yet?
Yeah, okay.
Later, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stefan Streck, followed by Jonathan Pincus. Pincus.
Good day, everybody. As you all know very well, my name is Stefan Streck, and I'm sure Mr. Zelenka is very proud to have me as a member of his ward. I am running for U.S. Congressional Representative here in Oregon's 4th District, hoping to take on Peter DeFazio in November. And we get to find out Tuesday, 8:00 p.m., if that's what's happening. This has been a fantastic past few months. I've been very busy, running 20-hour days on about 34 hours of sleep. It feels great. Now, my campaign has a very strong platform based on the Second Amendment, veterans, the foster care program, and against taxes. We're going to defend the Second Amendment. I want federal penalties against any elected official in this country who enforces or passes anti-gun legislation. We're going to lock them up. I want to defend veterans. Veterans deserve access to health care. They have earned that right with their service to our country. I want to protect the foster care program. There's too many vulnerable people who are being victimized by the policies of the heartless limousine liberals with their death grip on our state. I don't want to get cut down on taxes. We shouldn't have payroll taxes for any company worth less than $10 million. This will put more jobs, more jobs into our communities. And no worker who works over 40 hours a week should have to pay a penny of taxes on that overtime labor. These are working families that deserve that money. I hope everybody had a fantastic Mother's Day yesterday. Unfortunately, I know of a little girl in this city who did not have a happy Mother's Day. Now, her mother was told me just this last year, it was the happiest day of her life when she got off drugs and was going to get her child back. Unfortunately, she is dead because she overdosed on drugs shortly afterwards because the policies of the limousine liberals who run this state are killing people. Every single year, I have to watch more young people die because the liberal elite doesn't care about real Americans. Their priority is based on helping illegal aliens who are criminals instead of helping legal immigrants who are the backbone of our community and real working-class citizens that contribute to our communities. So, I'm working hard to represent these people. I hope that Wednesday morning, I get to wake up and get right back to work for Oregon's people and all the people of America. If anyone's interested, the website is www.votestreck.com, Streck like Star Trek with an S. The Facebook is facebook.com/votestreck, once again, and the Twitter, twitter.com/realstefanstreck. Thank you very much. Hope everyone has a fantastic rest of your evening. And thank you all for being here. God bless America. Vote Streck.
Thank you. Jonathan Pincus, followed by Jason Trout.
I'm Jonathan Pincus. As a professional who has worked in cooperation with the city for many years, I have to express that I was, have been very dismayed by the council's process regarding the Hayward Field Last Wednesday, a work session, the council basically swept away the public's only opportunity to engage meaningfully in the details of the proposed reconstruction and the impacts of them. Regardless of what anyone may think of the different options, that process is really precious to people in Eugene. Since that event, the public has learned that the structural engineer's report on the grandstand indicates that it's not falling down and that the deterioration is reasonably repairable. The public's also learned about the fully-approved Tinker Hatfield Plan, which would have provided a fabulous world-class facility that not only preserved the grandstand, but was actually eminently more flexible on both ends of the capacity scale for accommodating both the large events and the events that happen every day in that facility. The public also learned that the historic preservation, the state historic preservation office informed the city that they considered the building to be eligible for the National Register. And the public also learned that even while presenting the current plan, or even while, I'm sorry, even while presenting the Tinker Hatfield Plan as the approved plan, many months before they were planning the, what has been called the bait-and-switch, so to speak. We depend on the council to safeguard the public process, regardless of what anyone may think of an individual issue. The process is really important, and the public's participation in a meaningful way in that process is critical to have the kind of community that I think most of us want. Going forward, Euginians need to look for leadership that we can count on to safeguard that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Trout, followed by Teresa Bisho.
Good evening, council. My name's Jason Trout. I'm the regional manager for TNT Fireworks. I'm supervisor of Washington in Oregon. I wanted to speak to you guys tonight about the fireworks ordinance that you have on the docket this evening. You have three options out there. And I think from gathering all these city council meetings that I've gone to, not just Eugene, several in the last month, controlling the noise on fireworks is not something that, you know, is even negotiable for us. We have no way of controlling that. One of the biggest issues that we have in Eugene is the sound, the noise, and you guys have all demonstrated that that's a big priority for you, is to eliminate some of the sound. The sound's caused by full-sea fireworks, illegal fireworks coming into Oregon. And I want to ask the council to really focus all of your effort on keeping the consistency that the state of Oregon has currently. Washington has several different ordinances, several different municipalities have different ordinances within them, and it makes it very, very difficult to enforce. And I'm asking that you guys, you know, please try to stay consistent with the state law that every other city in Oregon has. It makes it much easier for the fire departments and the police departments to enforce. I'd also like to thank the staff for getting the agenda out in such a timely fashion to allow the citizens to be able to, you know, communicate with you guys. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Teresa Bisho, followed by Joe Tanner.
I'm Teresa Bisho, resident of the city of Eugene for 38 years, currently in Counselor Taylor's ward. I have a small business and an office in Crescent Village in northeast Eugene. I'm here tonight in behalf of developers and owners of six multi-unit housing projects within a half-mile of the vacant city park known as Stryker Field. On April 30th and again tonight, we submit a letter raising a concern about the city's use of SDC Park funds and the possible disconnect between the basis for the fee and the expenditure of those funds. Since July 1st, 1999, the city has collected over $2 million from those particular projects, six apartments and one senior living project, within walking or biking distance of Stryker Field Park. We are respectfully asking, where did the city spend the SDC Park funds? We realize historically the SDC Park funds that a developer pays when they get their building permit goes into a big pot and do not necessarily get allocated to serve the infrastructure needs of a Pacific geographic area. We get that. We understand that. However, it's irrefutable that the demand for Stryker Field Park has significantly increased since the city acquired the park over 30 years ago. The SDC Park fees collected just from these projects that I included, the analysis for, has been substantial. It's disconcerting that no funds have been spent on this city park. So we encourage you to investigate and then help ensure the equitable distribution of SDC funds. Last week, the developer submitted building plans for the next phase of Crescent Village Apartments. The owners support both resolutions that are going before you for action on Wednesday. We do request one change, and that is the new name for the project, as shown on the building plans, is going to be the McKenzie at Crescent Village. So we just ask that you incorporate that change for clarity in the resolutions. Thank you for your time and service, and a special thanks to Counselor Clark for his tireless support trying to get some SDC Park improvements in northeast Eugene, and Counselor Yay for her fresh, new enthusiasm for understanding the project needs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joe Tanner, followed by Dane Butler.
Good evening, honorable city council members. I'm here to bring up an issue that you may not be aware of. If you don't know me, my name's Joe Tanner. I currently serve as the lead pastor at One Love Church in Eugene. I've been there for about a year and a half now, and our church has grown from the 200s into the 400s. And currently, we're in a situation where our current location, our lease is about set to expire in about a year. So, we're currently in negotiations with our current tenant to renew the lease, but that is uncertain at this point, as we do have some competitors for the space as well. So needless to say, with a year to go, I have been looking around to see what might be available and what the zoning laws in the city are with regards and with respect to churches. And as I've taken a look at those zoning laws, I've become pretty concerned because they've placed some pretty burdensome regulations on us, given the uniqueness of church economics as well as the economics of the city. One of those things is, if you're a mid-sized church, it's very difficult to find a space that's actually useful, because residential locations are permitted with a conditional use permit, but those are not very accessible considering the limitations on space. So that leaves us mostly with commercial areas, which frankly are so burdensome with regards to price that it's almost impossible. For instance, Office Depot, not particularly expensive, has come open, but it would cost $20,000 a month in order to get into a space like that. And for a church, as you can imagine, you need an open space with lots of parking. There's just not a whole lot of options, with the exception of industrial spaces. And so far, zoning laws do not allow churches in either employment zones or industrial zones. I don't know a lot about zoning law, and I hadn't thought about it too much until my wife looked into the matter. And you may not be aware of this, but there are some problems with the zoning laws that violate the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which was adopted by the federal government in October 2000. And unfortunately, it seems that the city zoning law, probably unintentionally, I'm sure that nobody sat around in a dark room and thought, let's make things hard on churches, but I think unintentionally, like other cities, you're actually in violation of it, particularly the substantial burden section of it. It definitely could be debatable in a court of law, but I would definitely like to bring this especially to the attention of the city attorney and the city manager, because the interpretation is actually very black and white, and the chances of if legal action were taken, which I would hate to do, I have no really interest in doing that. It's almost a virtual certainty that we would win, particularly because the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act protects religious institutions and says that they must be treated as well as comparable secular institutions. And unfortunately, in the zoning laws currently as they're stated, many secular institutions of a similar nature are allowed in employment and industrial land use areas. What's probably most glaring is that clubs and lodges of a state or national organization are permitted. I actually have a document with me that is drafted by the U.S. Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division, and they give an example. Section 2B1 provides that religious assemblies and institutions must be treated at least as well as nonreligious assemblies and institutions.
Thank you. You can submit that.
The city attorney, I would urge you to look into this, please.
And you can submit that writing also, if you want to share those documents.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Not now at the podium, but you can turn, make it available to us. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Dane Butler, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
Hello, everybody. Dane Butler, northeast neighborhood. We had three other passionate members that were going to be here tonight but could not make it. They have spent hundreds of hours dedicated to seeing Stryker Field, which is on the agenda on Wednesday, come to fruition. I've lived around Stryker Field for over 20 years, adjacent for probably upwards of 10, and we've talked about Stryker Field for three generations of builders. Multifamily developments have talked about Stryker Field, a city-owned park, for over 30 years. And along with Teresa's $2 million of SDCs that have been taken in on those developments through multifamily, single-family has matched that over that 20-year period also. And I think it really is about time that those funds are put to work in our area. We've talked about it far too long. The city's owned that park for far too long, and we have plans in place to get it done. And I urge you guys to pass the resolution on Wednesday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen, followed by Thomas Alberti.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen, and I'm in the downtown. And I want to talk about public safety again. And I'm just going to keep on this till something's done. Every weekend, the city and the county have allowed open drug sales on the Courthouse Plaza. Many booths set up, including on the public sidewalk, which as I found out, is city property. And I talked to OLCC last week, and the selling of marijuana in a coysk, or little market booth, or in a strolling marijuana vendors are against the law. And very openly, they set up out there big signs, very evident what they're selling. It kind of makes the city liable if somebody ODs on it. I know if my child, if I had a child, and my child bought marijuana brownies and marijuana and smoked a bowl over there with someone and ended up in the hospital, which four kids did last year, I'd sue the crap out of the city and the county. And I am, it baffles me that you continue to allow this to go on and that nothing's done. It's right out in the open. You can drive by and see the booth and see what they're selling. When I talked to OLCC, they said that they can't do anything about it. They only have jurisdiction over people they license. However, they suggested I talk to law enforcement. But I've been talking to you guys for 10 years about this problem, and nothing's been done, so, which I conveyed the message to them, and they suggested I go maybe to the state, which I'm considering. Maybe we need to get the governor involved at this point, because you don't seem to do anything about it. I mean, it's not just the marijuana that's sold, it's the methamphetamine, it's the heroin, it's the ecstasy, it's alcohol, cigarettes, to whoever. A 10-year-old can have the money to buy it, they'll sell it to him. There's a guy who sets up out there with a camping tent. Considering everything that's done out in the open, I can't imagine what's going on in that camping tent totally concealed from public view. And what has to happen? Does someone have to get hurt? Does someone have to get molested in there? Raped? What? Before you do something about it? I mean, this poses a problem to our city. It makes Eugene look pretty lawless. And as far as I know from people I've heard, if you Google about Eugene on the internet, it pretty much says that, that Eugene's wide open. Anything goes. It's a free-for-all. Speaking with the county, the county's opinion is, it's first come, first served, whatever you want to do out there. So I think it's time you guys did something about it for the safety of our community. Brings a lot of drug dealers here and a lot of criminals. So, doesn't look good for our town. And many people have commented how rundown Eugene's gotten over the years.
Thank you. Thomas Alberti, followed by Aaron Taylor.
Hi, thanks for your time. My name's Tom Alberti. I live in Greg Evans District. I don't see Greg around. I suspect something happened. Anyway, I'm here to express my concern with the city's process as well, kind of to reiterate what John Pincus was talking about, but specifically in regards to the changes that you guys are making in the transportation regulations. I feel like the city council and the city staff is almost in cahoots with Uber, you know, and making these changes, and stakeholders like taxi owners and operators aren't being involved in the process at all, and that seems rather one-sided to me. I mean, I don't know that Uber is in contact with the city staff, but I imagine that they are. Otherwise, how would they know which regulations need changing for them to be, to want to come back in? They're able to come back in now, but you know, they don't want to. And I don't understand, you know, the taxi industry has been following the city regulations for years at great expense, and Uber comes in and operates illegally and thumbs their nose at the city, and then the city turns around and bends over backwards to do what they can to make it more comfortable for Uber to be here. And the process, you know, I think the stakeholders should have been involved in the beginning. And, you know, I just feel bamboozled. But what I'd like to know is who's making the proposed changes? I've tried to find out from this call in the city manager's office, and all's I could get was that there's three staff people that are making the proposed changes, and I'm not even sure who, if there's more, or who, and what they're, what they're, what they're, what information that they're bringing in to make their decisions, to make the proposals. Anyway, I just think the process stinks. And what I'd like to know is there, is there state guidelines that regulate what procedures municipalities must adhere to? municipalities must adhere to to make regulation changes? Is there, is there any kind of rules that regulate that process? Because the process stinks.
Thank you.
So that's a question, is there?
Thank you. We will, after all the public forum, councillors have the opportunity to respond. So we'll just listen to everybody and then we'll respond. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aaron Taylor, followed by Quinton Cooper.
I want to just ask that we all notice that over every fireworks meeting we've been to, I've never made an announcement in front of my church, never asked people outside of my own staff to consider even coming, and yet there's been one or two people concerned about fireworks. The paper printed that there's almost no one calling and saying there's a problem with fireworks. It's just a handful of people that are complaining and an agenda that I'm concerned about for our city. Fireworks has, for many, for as long as I can remember, even as a child, has helped raise money for groups. Last time we were in this meeting, I was told from this podium that I should be ashamed of myself for selling fireworks by one of you, out loud in front of everyone. That's ridiculous. I think we've got a personal agenda by a few that's being pushed, and it's overwhelming. We have over 40,000 purchases by families in our tents. That's not to, that's not to say TNT, that's not to say, and we have five locations. Five. I can tell you, we don't have 40,000 concerned people about the noise, yet we're going to limit the rights of people over a few. A few that, in all honesty, I think if you honestly take a look, complain about a lot of things. We already have noise ordinances. They already exist. Every law you need is already on the books. Every one of them. It's a felony to modify a firework, and yet your greatest concern is a firework that it's, if you go by an illegal and bring it in, it's not a felony. You modify any firework, it's a felony and it's serious. And please take it serious. And yet how many people have been charged with felonies over fireworks in the city? Has there been injuries? There's been a few. Compare that to marijuana sales, compare that to alcohol sales, where people die in our streets, yet we don't limit that. We regulate that. We're looking at regulating fireworks a thousand times more than alcohol. I don't know what's going on, and I don't know why this agenda is being pushed so hard over a few. I respect the vets. My dad was a vet. My dad didn't like fireworks, but he respected and he gave 20 years of his life so that we had freedoms that the city council shouldn't take away. Let's put it to a vote. Let's put this thing to a vote.
Thank you. Let's see, lost track here. Quinton Cooper, followed by Penny Patterson.
Hi, my name's Quinton. I'm from Eugene. Last week, I talked with the Lane County Board of Commissioners about implementing the Lane County Youth Advisory Council, to which we got the yes vote for. Now today, I'm asking for a Eugene Youth Advisory Committee to be implemented. Kids don't feel like they got a voice, and that's the main reason that I came last week to talk to the Lane County Board of Commissioners, was as someone who is only 15 and goes to high school, I see what goes on in the halls. I know how kids are feeling. I talk to them nearly every day. I've been an online listener for a long time, which is basically peer support. And so many kids come saying, "I feel like I'm being pushed down. I feel like I have nothing left. I feel like my voice has been taken from me and thrown in the trash." And I know a lot of kids in this community feel like that, too. I feel like this is a good start, and I hate to say it, there's something that broke in the system. If you've been following the news, you know, over the last eight months, kids have been killing themselves on killing themselves. It's not good. We need to do something about it, and this is something that we can do about it. This is something that we can put in soon, now we can have functioning, and then maybe, maybe that might triage this situation until we can actually get something that might work with this. Because we're failing the kids. I don't know how many of you are parents, but we're failing them. I'm not a parent myself, but if I was a parent, I'd be scared because the number I'm talking about, which was like, I think it's around five to seven known, known, because not all of them are reported, kids have killed themselves recently. If the attempted suicides were added into that, that'd be much, much, much higher. If we give them a voice, we give them a platform to speak, maybe that number will go down, and maybe it will give ourselves more time. I've been working really, really, really hard in the community, trying to make change, trying to make sure that kids are going home to their families, and making sure that those parents don't have to wake up to find their kid dead or injured. And we gotta do something. We gotta do something. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Patterson, followed by Shelley Correll.
Good evening. Thank you all for giving us time to comment. I am Penny Patterson. I live in northeast Gillum, and I am a member of the Northeast Neighborhood Board. I want to thank Councilman Clark and Councilwoman Yeh for their support of the initiatives that we are desiring in our area. I would like to comment and echo the comments of both Dane Butler and Teresa Bischow on the huge need in our area for Stryker Field being developed into a community park, particularly given its proximity to the 4J land that's owned nearby and the opportunity for some collaboration with that. I think that the need has multiplied so greatly in our area because of the housing increase, multi-family units, et cetera. In the last five years, the need has increased enormously, and we just have a greater need for parks and places for families to be able to go to have picnics and recreation and so on. Other portion that I'd like to speak to is the connector of a road between Crescent Village and Coburg. Currently, there's one way out that I'm aware of, and that exits onto Crescent from Crescent Village, and it is a huge, huge debacle there. It's very difficult, very frustrating, and if we were to increase, or we were to actually develop Stryker Field into a park, the need would become greater. We could extend into Stryker Field, out onto Coburg, and be able to have excellent access to that whole area. So I would appreciate your consideration and vote yes on these issues. I know they're coming up soon. And thank you again for allowing the public time to speak.
Thank you. Shelley Correll, followed by Karen Knudsen.
Okay. Hi, my name's Shelley Correll, and I'm speaking on fireworks. I really don't feel that the legal safe and sane fireworks have the noise value you guys are saying they do. What has the noise value is all the illegals, the M80s. Those are the ones that scare my dog. It's not the safe and sane fireworks, and I have a husky and she hides under the table if she hears an M80. But those are illegal ones. Why isn't the more issue of you going after the people that are setting off the illegal fireworks that are the noise makers, not the safe and sane fireworks? Which help, you know, the community because of the fundraisers that it does for the kids, the things that it helps us be able to do for our outreach programs, all the things that benefits from the fireworks sales, whereas the loud, noisy ones are the illegals. So I just wish you would take that into consideration. Not all fireworks are bad. You know, not all fireworks are super noisy. It is the illegal ones that are the noisiest and the ones that are the issue. So if you would take the, it off of the same, safe and sane ones, but put it to where it really needs to go, on to the illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Knudsen, followed by Ariel Sifuah.
Good evening, council. I just want to provide a bit of an update and say a few words about collaborative efforts underway in our community, which are always nice to spend a little time talking about. Better Housing Together, as I think all of you know, is working as a community-led effort to increase the supply affordability and diversity of housing in our community. We take a collaborative approach with our partners to this work, and we're proud to be doing this work. It's not easy to do, to work together in a diverse collection of organizations and individuals, but we all know that it's important, and we actually feel much more enthusiasm and encouragement from the work than we do discouragement. So just so you know, on the level, more encouragement than discouragement when talking about housing. But we know we have a lot of work to do, a lot of serious work to do, and we need to be careful about how we use our resources and the limited bandwidth and financial resources that we have to bring to bear on the local housing crisis. So we're continuing this effort of working together as a collection of organizations, now almost 40 in number. And I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank all of those organizations and businesses who are working together on this effort and have stepped forward to support a community conversation about the importance of housing affordability and diversity. So when people talk about Better Housing Together, the collection of organizations that they're referring to is broad and quite diverse and includes the American Institute of Architects of Southwest Oregon, Better Eugene Springfield Transportation, Eugene Association of Realtors, Kaywood, AARP Oregon, Cornerstone Community Housing and Affordable Housing Developer, the University of Oregon and University of Oregon College of Design's Architecture Department, the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce, Springfield Area Chamber of Commerce, Lane Community College, the Home Builders Association, the League of Women Voters, United Way of Lane County, We Can, 1,000 Friends of Oregon, Live Move, We Bike Eugene, APA Oregon, Transportation Growth Management, Architects Building Community, sponsors, the Booth Kelly Makers District, Essex Construction, Shelter Care, Hearthstone Real Estate, Habitat for Humanity, Homes for Good Housing Agency, Arbor South Architecture, Bring, Peace Health, Cultivate Design Development, the Local Chapter of the Cascadia, USGBC, and Women's Space. That's who we are now with what we've been able to do with our sort of bootstrapped community efforts, but it is reason to feel encouraged that a collection of organizations and businesses are trying to come together to tackle this crisis because it is large enough that we have no choice but to work together, and we are certain that the outcomes will be better in doing so. So thank you for your continued interest in this work.
Thank you. Ariel Sifuah, followed by Patrick Koch.
Hi, my name's Ariel Sifuah, and I'm speaking about fireworks. I just, I think that a lot of the fireworks incidents that are happening are because parents aren't either watching their kids, or it's the unsafe ones, and so I really just, the things that we do with the fireworks are the things that is done, you know, from raising money for the fireworks is really for the good, for the homeless and for organizations and stuff like that. And you go into all the firework tents, and we, like, things are posted about safety, about the law of, you know, modifying fireworks. We follow the standards. We follow letting people know that it is illegal to do these things, and a lot of the things, the complaints that are done is because people aren't following the standards. And so that should not be taken into consideration. That's their own personal doing. And so I just ask that you remember that the positive things that it's doing, not just for overseas, but for our community and for helping the youth in our area to do good things with their lives instead of turn to drugs and alcohol or spend their summer volunteering at a firework lot instead of, you know, just being dumb teenagers, making dumb decisions, providing a positive atmosphere for the teenagers and ways to just have a good summer and different things. And so one time a year, we get to celebrate 4th of July, celebrate our country, and so why are we being limited for that? And so it's positive, a lot of positive outcomes versus just the few negative incidents because people aren't following standards. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Anthony Hopper. Oh, let's see, we have Patrick Koch first, and then Anthony-
Coke, first of all.
Coke, Coke.
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank the opportunity to talk. Often I get all you guys together to look at a bald guy. All right, first of all, I am a Desert Storm vet. I'm also the homeless on your city streets. I was at the mission for years. My PTSD was through the roof, but through the fireworks and the money raised for that, I've now been able to get off the streets. They helped me learn what I needed to do, and this is all money that's raised through the fireworks. And they always show them about helping people off the streets, helping veterans. Well, I am that guy. Okay? Now I teach Celebratory Recovery, which is get other people off drugs and alcohol and off the streets. You need, like, this has all helped me. I can now go out there and help others now, and that's what I think our community needs a lot more of, instead of just whining. And just do your jobs and help everybody else out. That's what you're supposed to do. You figure out a way through the valley of death, and you go back and you help other people get off the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Anthony Hopper.
Good evening. When it comes to the issue of fireworks, the first thing I think of is the fact that we've been down this same road a few times now. This isn't the first time this matter's been brought before the city council. And as I sat here tonight, the first thing that I noticed was that of the 70-something people that are sitting in this room, there wasn't one public outcry to support any more legislation on fireworks. So I'm not sure exactly where the outcry comes from. I do know that when the first set of rules was passed, I believe in 2016, there was an article in the newspaper that said that the amount of incidents of noise complaints was cut by more than in half. And that came straight from the Eugene City Police Department. So my concern is, instead of passing more legislation, legislation is empty without enforcement. Why are we not doing more to enforce the legislation that the state already has in place? We can pass laws all day long, but if nobody's going to raise money or put training or put other consorted efforts into enforcing these laws, what we're going to get is, everybody in this room, some of us still are, we're young at one point and our parents made more rules. And when they made more rules with no enforcement, we found ways around the rules. And when you make more rules about fireworks in this example, what we're going to do is we're concerned about the areas of South Eugene, we're concerned about the fires, we're concerned about the noise and different types of things. We can pass laws that make anything illegal we want to, but if we don't have enforcement and we're not even fully enforcing the legislation we have in place now, all we're going to do is push these same people into the wooded areas to hide. If we think that fires and disasters and things like what happened up at the gorge and even here locally in town are bad now, when we make it even more illegal, we're going to push them further into the woods. We're going to push them into outlying areas. They're going to be up Shotgun Creek. They're going to burn thousands of acres, not just homes. So if we're concerned about our future, we're concerned about our property, if we're concerned about our community, legislation won't change a community. Enforcement and community involvement will change a community. And so instead of just making laws, we could make enforcement. We can take the money that we're legislating with and maybe start programs to help veterans with PTSD, rather than just making laws to try to surplant that, because we're going to assert people's rights for nothing. We're going to take away people's rights and say that we're doing it for a group of people that we're not even reaching out to to help. We're going to remove some people's rights and call that help. Really, to help people, we could take our consorted effort, the money that we spend on legislation, the money we spend on enforcing more laws and more laws and more laws, until whatever this agenda is reaches its end. Why don't we put programs in place to help teens, to help the homeless, to help the veterans, to help, you know, animal shelters and different types of things that we're calling our concerns from this area on, but we're really doing nothing about? We're simply just stripping away the freedoms that these very veterans fought to give us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is our final speaker, and that closes our public forum. I would invite councillors who wish to make any comments on anything they've heard tonight? Any, anyone in the queue? No? Well, I will, yep, do you want to speak?
No, I'm gonna-
You sure? You're going to restrain yourself?
I'm going to resist it.
You're going to restrain yourself? So I'm just going to respond to the gentleman who was worried about the process around Uber, that we had several work sessions, we've had a public hearing, it's been quite a long process, very full engagement. We've, we have voted on that, and now there's an administrative-
Buying them over $100,000.
Where we've increased the, right, we've, there's, there's been a long public process, so you are welcome to look on the city website, and you can get the whole record if you just ask, you know, use the key phrase, Uber. Full, full record of that process, and it's at the administrative point at this point. So we did follow, in fact, our city charter law to enact that, so you can ask questions about that afterwards. And to the young man, if he's still here, about a youth advisory committee, I'm quite interested in that, and I would be happy to talk to you about that. So maybe we can follow up. I'd be interested in hearing what you have to say about that. So thank you very much for testifying, and I think that brings that to a close. So we are now ready for our regular meeting, and the first piece on the agenda is our consent calendar.
I move to pass the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Counselor Zelenka?
I'd like to pull item C and D.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the consent calendar minus items C and D? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, that passes. Thank you. And then- And then, would you like to speak to those items?
Yeah, C was ratification of the Metropolitan Wastewater Commission, MWMC, Regional Wastewater Budget and Capital Improvement. So I wanted to take this opportunity to have Matt Stoudt, the general manager, come up and talk about a really cool program they're doing and an award that they did with regard to this budget on the Poplar Farm in Northwest Youth Corps and the use of the wood that's coming out of Poplar Farm.
Really? Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Wait a second, I've lost track of the...
Did you just invite him up to speak?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
I was distracted and lost track.
No problem. Just briefly, I wanted to speak to the Poplar Harvest. MWMC, Partnership of Eugene Springfield and Lane County, owns and operates six hundred acre parcels of land out on Aubrey Lane, where we grow hybrid poplar trees. We've made two harvests thus far, we have what we call Management Unit Two that we harvested last year, and we're replanting that this year, it's a hundred and fifty acres, approximately a hundred and fifty acres. And we put a contract, we put a request for proposals out, and we got bids back, and Northwest Youth Corps was the low bidder, and they were actually substantially lower than the other bidders. And it was, it's a great opportunity for us to work with that organization that works with youth from diverse backgrounds and accomplish our clean water goals while planting our management unit. So I'm happy to entertain more questions about the budget or the poplar harvest, if you have them.
Oh, and the wood, the harvest?
What, about the harvest?
Yeah, and what you're gonna do with it.
Okay, so most of the wood went to chips, but a significant portion this year went to urban lumber in Springfield and was milled, and then we partnered with Nine Wood, who turned it into, is turning it into ceiling grills, so it's very similar to what you have above your heads. And that is going to be installed as a demonstration project in the library meeting room where the commission meets for public viewing, and then we hope to, upon further harvests, partner with Eugene and Lane County to do the same.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And did you wanna speak to item D as well?
Sure, or do you wanna do one at a time?
Oh, I guess we could vote on that, yes. So all in favor of item C on the consent calendar? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, thank you. And now you can speak to item D.
Yeah, D, I don't have an issue with this, I just wanted to pull it and kind of celebrate it a little bit, because often these projects don't get celebrated, and this particular one is a reaffirming of the twenty-year low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the Hilliard Terrace project, LRTD. I wanted to pull it partly because I like to say LRTD, but the other thing is that Hilliard Terrace is twenty-two units. There were also four other projects that we've done LRTD for, Emerald Village and Birchwood Apartments, Ross Lane Apartments, and McDonald, all this last January. So that's a significant amount of affordable housing and low-income housing that we've done. And since 1990, we've approved thirty-one projects and over twelve hundred units, and I think that is, when we're talking about the stuff that, about affordable housing, this is exactly the type of stuff we've been talking about. This is federally subsidized housing, but it's still an important part of that mix.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of item D? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, passes, thank you very much. So we are now closing out a council meeting and opening a public hearing, an ordinance concerning the prohibition of unlicensed dogs within the downtown core and amending section 4.427 of the Eugene Code 1971. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is a public hearing to receive feedback on a proposed ordinance that would prohibit unlicensed dogs within the downtown core, an area defined in the Eugene Code, except for the publicly-owned property and rights-of-way abutting the dining room located at 270 West Eighth Avenue. The purpose of the ordinance is to create a safe environment and experience within this high pedestrian traffic area of downtown. The ordinance would prohibit dogs in the downtown core unless the dog owner holds a valid dog license that certifies the dog has been vaccinated for rabies, and the license is attached to a collar or harness. Under the proposed ordinance, any valid dog license that meets this requirement would qualify, thus welcoming community members and visitors to have their licensed dogs downtown. This is a public hearing only. Council is scheduled to take action on the proposed ordinance on May 29th.
Thank you. The, formally opening the public hearing, those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form. For the information desk, we have four speakers. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer, the red light indicates the end of the three minutes. And our first speaker is Tiffany Edwards, followed by David Picione.
Good evening, Mayor Venice and city councillors. My name is Tiffany Edwards, I'm a resident of Ward Seven, and I'm here on behalf of the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce, in support of the ordinance requiring dogs in the downtown area to be licensed. I'd first like to recognize and commend council for its leadership on this issue and passing a pilot program in 2017. This has enabled our community to experience the impacts firsthand. It's also allowed us to collect data demonstrating a measurable reduction in animal-related incidents, twenty-six percent to be exact. We've also received feedback from our members, downtown residents, and others, that the pilot program was successful in increasing the overall sense of safety in the downtown area. The Eugene Chamber has continued to be very active in outreach around this issue, and we can attest that it has, in fact, been an effective tactic in dealing with issues around public safety in downtown. And many of the people who originally opposed the pilot project have actually come to support the initiative, due in part having experienced firsthand the many positive outcomes from the temporary ordinance. If passed, we feel it's important to continue to collect data to ensure that the ordinance, as written, continues to serve its purpose in helping to provide a safe and welcoming downtown area, and if necessary, be willing to revisit the conditions of the ordinance as to remain most effective. So on behalf of the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce and its members, I urge support in passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. David Picione, followed by Susan Costa.
Whatever you like. Dave Picione, I'm gonna talk a little bit about something that's parallel to what you're talking about with the dog licensing. And twelve, about twelve years ago, in this very room, back there, we had a meeting with the No Kill Committee, which was a group of people that didn't want animals to be killed, that had a potential to be adopted. So for, when I heard somebody say that some dogs will hold their urine or other things for three, up to three or four days if they're not let out, that made me wanna volunteer for the, to let out the dogs, to go to the yard and let the kitties out of the kennels and all of this stuff. So I did that for five years, twice a week, throughout, three hours each day, until the Lane County Animal Shelter, which was on First and Bertelson, fell under the auspices of Green Hill, which is a private entity, and it doesn't pay the workers, the employees enough, and the animals are suffering, so I had enough of that and I quit. So, but what I would like to suggest is, there are a lot of animals that have to be euthanized because of bad, because they bite, or they, whatever. And, but to minimize this number of dogs or cats that have to be euthanized, it would be good to lower the amount of these animals that are in, and under, they're being, they're being raised by people that don't care about them and want them to fight and all this stuff. So I think that the county, the city should pay for spaying and neutering of animals, of cats and dogs, so that there's not as many of them unwanted, and if somebody wants a dog or a cat, they can go to the shelter and adopt one. It's, it's a process that requires you to have a home with a yard if you have a dog, you have to be able to prove that you can support the animal and give it all the shots. And, well, while we're at the subject of spaying dogs and cats, well, it's been, no, I'm not gonna say that. Okay, just that, thanks.
Thank you. Susan Costa, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
Any chance?
Hi, my name is Susan Costa, I am in Mike Clark's ward. I own a store downtown, I belong to the Eugene Chamber of Commerce, I belong to downtown Eugene merchants, I think I speak for many of them, and I'm downtown many, many days. So I want to tell you, a few days ago, we had a problem because some scary men with three scary dogs camped out in front of my neighbor Voodoo Donuts, and during that time, I had zero people come into my store, I think because they were really scary looking. And the next day, I learned from another man who's often on the streets out there, the scary men were selling heroin, which is really bad, but as somebody else commented tonight, that's apparently how easy it is to do here in Eugene. So I am all for everything you can do to make our city and our downtown more safe. And I also want to make sure that you are aware that there are so many properties downtown that have sat unleased for months and months. Right across the street from me, One East Broadway, has been released for a year, the former Scan Design Building has been released since last summer, many stores have left, the old Gilton Gossamer, they're gone, Heritage Dry Goods moved, The Nest have all left, and those spaces all sit there unleased, which is really sad for our downtown. And I heard that the city spent tens of thousands of dollars last summer on programming, which is great, thank you, but if you simply made downtown safer, then businesses would move in and do their own fun activities, you wouldn't need to spend a dime. So I think I speak for many, many people downtown, that we really hope that you'll pass the dog license ordinance, that would be great, and as the gal from the chamber commented, it really did help last summer. And I wish you had already done this now, because there's already scary dogs and people down there. And we hope that you will reinstate police patrols downtown, that was great last summer, that hugely improved everybody's sense of safety. And I'll just add, I hope you're gonna pass the thousand-foot marijuana buffer, because that will also help keep downtown pleasant. So please know that I think this is really what the working, family-raising, tax-paying, voting citizens of Eugene want, they want a safe, pleasant downtown, so thanks if you can help.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen.
My name's Kimberly Gladen, I'm a downtown resident. I live right across from the dining room on Eighth Street there. I go through the downtown all the time, since I don't have a car, I take the bus and I walk everywhere. I encourage you to put that ordinance in requiring dog licenses downtown. I think the fact that it requires people to have their dogs vaccinated against rabies is a safety issue, not just for the residents and the visitors and our businesses and the people who work and live in the downtown, but also for the many people, for instance, in my building, who have companion animals that are subject to getting bit and getting rabies, and it's devastating for a person who has a companion animal or a service animal to have that dog die. And I think it's also dangerous for them to be subjected to a dog that may contract rabies, and rabies is becoming more prevalent, a lot of the diseases are in our packed city. I've had issues with dogs downtown, trying to get by them, having dogs lunge at people, barking, snapping. I would hate for someone to get bit, I'd hate for a child to get bit and have to go through rabies vaccinations, so, which are incredibly painful series of shots. I feel that for public safety, it's very important that in a dense area, such as the downtown, where there's a lot of people, and children, and dogs of residents and people who are visitors, that we look to their safety and make sure that every dog is licensed and has had their shots. I had some visitors the other day commenting, who had lived here years ago and came back to visit, and were noting how nice Springfield is, how much improved it's gotten to be, how beautiful it was. And then they also noticed how rundown Eugene has become since when they lived here, and they left right about the time we were starting the redevelopment. So in their opinion, they wondered what happened? Why did Eugene go downhill so fast? And I have noticed businesses do are moving out. Right near my building, business moved out that did mailings, and they've got a nice sign on their door, they moved to Springfield. And I guess I can't blame them for moving to Springfield, because Springfield doesn't allow this kind of behavior downtown that we see. And I do think it's time for you to start making things safe here again. Thank you.
Thank you. That, are there any comments or questions from the council that you've heard? Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I will support this, actually, I think it's already the law that dogs have to be licensed, so, but it's good to have them licensed because they have to get the rabies shot in order to get the license. And that ensures that they'll be, that they will have the shot. I wonder why we would be exempting any area, though, since it's already a law that, that dogs have to be licensed.
The difference is, on this proposal, or in other parts of the community, there's a five-day waiting period or a grace period for the, for an animal to have a license. In this case, you would just have to have a license to be in this particular area in the downtown.
There's no grace period, but why would we have a grace period if you're over by the dining room?
The dining room was carved out under the previous ordinance around the restrictions, and so we just set it up in the same geographic area to avoid any confusion.
Counselor Cyret?
So to address that, I, we exempted the dining room from the original dog ban ordinance because it provides a social service that people need to access, and there was concerns that people would not be able to access the services there if we imposed the dog ban on that piece of property. So I'm assuming staff is using the same logic here, that we don't want to prevent people from coming to get a meal they might need because they can't meet this five-day grace period. They would still need to have their dogs licensed, just like everybody else, but not have the benefit of the five-day grace period if we included it. So that's the logic behind the dining room.
Counselor Clark?
I have said many times that I think it's a bad idea for us to enable behavior that we don't agree with in the name of trying to be understanding. This is a very good example of that. It is my opinion that we enable behavior downtown we wouldn't otherwise like to do out of a misplaced sense of kindness. I hope we alter that before we pass this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, that closes the public hearing and adjourns the city council meeting, and I'm now opening the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. Counselor President?
Getting there. By the way, if anybody's got a charger cord here for the iPads, I could sure use it, I got about one percent battery left. That would be really cool, thanks. I have, that I move to appoint the mayor's nominee of Thomas Fiorelli to the River Guides.
Second.
Okay, I can speak to this if you want, since I have suggested, we had a vacancy that formed on the River Guides because one of the appointees got a job with the city of Eugene, and therefore couldn't serve as the River Guides. I went back through the very robust list of candidates, many of whom had, they had all applied the first time, were interested the second time, and I pretty quickly zeroed in on Thomas Fiorelli because in so many ways, he represented the, the sort of same spectrum of qualities that the person he was replacing represented. He was a young person with an expertise in landscape architecture, and, and the woman who was leaving the role... who was leaving the role is, is young and with an expertise in landscape architecture. And so I had worked fairly hard the first time around to have a good distribution of, of age and interest and experience, and so he felt like he was a natural fit to replace that role, but I'm open to any other comments or questions. Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Thank you, that passes, that's great. Okay, that adjourns the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and reopen, uh, the city council meeting. Okay, fireworks. Wanna read the?
I will, as it is my duty to do. I move to adopt the ordinance set forth in Attachment B, restricting the dates consumer fireworks may be used to December 31st, January 1st, July 3rd, or July 4th, limiting display fireworks to July 3 through July 5, and adding an administrative civil penalties provision.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Counselor Clark?
We said this, I've said this more times than I can count, the problems that people complain about are problems of enforcement. It, it is nonsense on stilts to imagine that these further restrictions will stop the complaints that people make about fireworks, other than those who would want them all banned for different reasons. But, even those who would want fireworks entirely banned, would find the same result, that people would ignore such a ban, and they would light illegal fireworks, and the ones we currently call legal, and they'd continue to do it, because we don't enforce it. That's the problem we have. And if, and the easiest way to know that is, I, I made a, I made kind of a little informal anecdotal sort of trial look here the other night. We have a blanket law against the idea of backyard fires, especially right now. And, uh, I counted that between Friday and Sunday, seven of my friends were posting pictures of their backyard fires on Facebook. Because, they, why not? We don't enforce that. This ordinance is silly, and I hope we don't pass it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this? All right, ready for a vote? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Opposed? Two. So that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now on to the final, final action of the night. You wish to... Do we need an explanation about this? Do we wanna have?
You want me to go ahead and make a motion here and save, save us this is?
Let the manager introduce it, perhaps? He can make a motion.
I, I think it's up to you of how much information you would, you would like. Uh, we're here, we can provide exhaustive information, or very high level, depending on what would be helpful for you.
Okay, let's just introduce the topic and the motion, and, and we can discuss when the motion's on the table. Does that make sense?
I believe from previous conversation tonight, I'm gonna alter the motion that I make, unless it dies very quickly, in which case, then we'll go back to what's scheduled here, but I would move that we postpone consideration of these ordinances on Item 6, until we've had one more work session on the subject.
Second.
Discussion? Good, Counselor Pryor.
Um, while I agree, we do need a lot more conversation about this particular issue, um, and I, I agree with that strongly. I think these three particular motions are within the, the scope of, of not conflicting with the, what that conversation would be. So I'm comfortable going ahead and voting on these three items, but that doesn't mean to say I don't think we shouldn't have that additional robust conversation about accessory dwelling units. These three, I think are, I'm, I'm comfortable with these three.
Any other comments? I will, um, reinforce that myself, that I think that we have three on the table that enable us to proceed with a more robust conversation later. Now I have elicited comments. Okay, Counselors Zelenka, and then Counselor Clark.
So, does that mean we're cutting off discussion tonight, and tabling it until another date?
Okay.
Or are we?
You wanna weigh in on this legal?
I can answer that question to my motion, if that's what it is.
Yeah, if it's a move to table, then we're done with the conversation.
My motion was to have a work session specifically on this, so that I can, both personally, for personal reasons, so that I can do more reading before we get there, and be more prepared for having an intelligent discussion on this, because there's parts of it I mentioned earlier that I would like to have better, I, uh, better understanding, rather than work through all of the details here at the table of all the definitions that aren't listed as I believe they ought to be. So we're gonna have a back and forth with staff that could have us here for quite a long while, from my amendments alone.
So, so, to clarify, a mo, a motion to table ends discussion?
A motion to table, which is a date uncertain, is not debatable. A motion to postpone to a time certain?
Just what mine was.
Is debatable. And so a motion to postpone until there's another work session falls more in the category of a motion to postpone to a date certain, than just an indefinite motion to table.
So we would be able to have a conversation after we vote on this?
Well, no. What I'm saying is, the motion is debatable, so you can have a discussion on that now, of whether you should postpone it.
Then it's up to the mayor to determine what we have, what kind of conversation we have after that motion?
Absolutely. Yes. Correct.
I would encourage the mayor to have a discussion for a while.
Yeah.
And answer some questions, so that staff can go away with, uh, some more information about what they should be looking at.
I totally agree. Okay, so, does anyone wanna speak to this challenge of what needs to be discussed? What, what, what are we postponing to discuss?
So, may, um...
Vote on the motion.
Vote on the motion?
Even after the vote on the motion, is some sense of timing of when you would like us to come back. We can come back as early as May 23rd, that's a potentially open, or we can come back next fall, if you really don't want us to come back. And so, I think it'll be just helpful for us to get a sense of your timing on that.
I guess I wanna weigh in on this, before we vote on this. Because of my concerns about the timeline, and because of my concerns about, this is a conversation that could be, as the manager has cited, could go on extensively. We have a Senate bill that calls for us to respond to, to their legislation by July 1st, and so I do feel there's a burden on the council to respond in good faith, in a timely way, to that, to that instruction. So I am a little concerned about postponing in a very indefinite way. My suggestion to you is that, in fact, the ordinance in front of us are relatively straightforward path, and all of the questions that are really more complicated, we have already postponed in this process to Phase 2, which has not yet begun. So I would encourage you to consider actually not postponing to another work session, simply because I'm worried about the timing.
If that's a friendly to postpone to May 23rd, I'll accept it.
Okay, with me?
The mayor?
Yes, I'm, I'm not making a friendly, I'm just discussing my point of view.
I'll, I'll, if so...
Well, let me, let...
Recognized, I will amend my motion to, to alter it to May 23rd, so that we just have adequate time, and we can consider this in a timely way.
Uh, Counselor Zelenka?
Well...
Well, okay.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes, it's okay.
So, my concern is that we have adequate time to talk about this before the July 1 deadline. And so I don't have an, I don't have a problem talking about it some more, I think that's probably appropriate. Um, and there's still some unanswered questions in my mind about this, so, but I didn't want it to be so unopened-ended, that we were talking about it into, uh, into a problem area of going past July 1. So, given the 23rd is a date certain, then, um, so did that cut off debate?
No.
Okay, good.
No, now you made it even clearer, you can debate it.
All right, so, I'll, I'll be in support of doing that, but I think we also should be talking about it tonight, to get some more clarity, so we can talk about it better on the 23rd.
Me, too.
So, my question of clarity, so if we post, if we have another work session on this, May 23rd, then presumably, we would, we, we have to set a date to vote on it?
You, there would be nothing that would prevent you from voting on May 23rd also. If there are, if the result of that work session is direction to staff to make changes to one or more of those ordinances, or that discussion actually, um, results in needing another public hearing, that is something that we would look at the agenda on. But you could, the three ordinances that you have to act on this evening, you could still act on next Wednesday, and then start Phase 2, which would then go back through the Planning Commission. So, it's really...
So, the most productive way would be, as Counselor Zelenka has suggested, which is, if we decide to postpone, to still dedicate the time tonight to discussing this, Counselor Pryor? Because otherwise, we're just postponing by a week, but not actually doing anything. Counselor Pryor?
Okay, is the, is the motion that we are considering, dealing with all three of these bills, together?
Yes.
Then what I would like to do is move to amend, to have this motion to postpone deal with Bill 5184 and 5185, because I would still like to see us take action on 5186, because I don't see us needing any more time regarding churches, synagogues, and temple property.
Is that a friendly amendment?
That's, if, if you wanted to make a...
I'll accept it if it's a friendly amendment.
Okay, then we'll deal with the first two, and then we can still take action on, um, church properties this evening. Okay.
Okay, okay, so, phew. Okay, so, so we are voting on a motion to postpone discussion to May 23rd of the first two ordinances. Correct?
If you want to know if it's okay with the second, it is.
Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Okay, that passes. Now on the table is...
The third one.
The third ordinance.
Which I shall read.
Perfect.
If I can bring this back up again, sorry.
Like a piece of paper?
Betty, you're killing me, you're just killing me. Which one was it? It was the third one, so...
5186.
Yeah. I move to adopt Council Bill 5186, an ordinance concerning housing on church, synagogue, and temple property.
Second, discussion of this, Counselor Saret?
So I had a question about, um, it looks, from the way I'm reading this, that this change would only be allowed, um, for churches, synagogues, and temples that are located in R1 low-density. Is that a correct interpretation? Sorry?
Let me look up that sheet real quick.
Quick.
I think that's correct, but hold on. Um, third ordinance. Correct.
And is that the only location that we allow churches, temples, and synagogues that might have property that could accommodate these kinds of units? She's gotta get out, she's gotta get the big book.
You know, I would say, before, anecdotally, that is where we mostly see them. I'm gonna double-check, I do believe we allow them in other residential zones, but they have different density requirements, and so I'm not sure that this is as necessary in those zones, because here, the issue in R1 is you can have one dwelling, or you can have multifamily, which is three or more, and...
So this is getting to where they could have two?
Right, so it's kind of a simple fix to that situation.
I'm just worried that if we're limiting it to the R1, are we losing opportunities for other, uh, places of worship that might qualify, and then they still wouldn't be able to build?
So they, uh, churches, synagogues, temples, other places of worships are allowed in R1, R2, R3, and R4, all subject to a conditional use permit, and they, in the, the, they are required to meet minimum and maximum density requirements, so, um, I don't think it would be the same issue, because if you have a large enough, uh, R2-zoned parcel, you would have to meet minimum density requirements.
Gotcha. Okay, that helps me understand. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, this was a, a church in my ward, near, near my house, actually, that, that bumped into this weird part of the code, that, uh, said you could build one house, or three houses, or more, but you couldn't build two. And it made no sense, um, so, 'cause of the way the code was written. So this fixes that negative loophole, uh, and I encourage my fellow counselors to support it.
Any other comments? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor of Council Bill 5186? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Very good, so that passes. Thank you. That's great. Okay, so now, let's go back. And, um, we have had some discussion about the secondary dwelling units, about the, um, the proposal, the recommendation from the Planning Commission, to make some, uh, essential fixes related to where secondary dwelling units could be cited, and to defer discussions about design and citing to a Phase 2. So we're just actually talking about what the Planning Commission suggested be a Phase 1. So do we have comments? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, why wouldn't, I have a series of questions, and I'll run out of time, so I'll take a, probably need a second round. Why wouldn't we alter, if in fact, we say A equals B, why wouldn't we alter in our code everywhere where it says secondary dwelling units, to match 1051, to say accessory dwelling units?
That is an outstanding question. The Planning Commission actually talked about that, and then, um, we kind of decided not to do it at this time, but that doesn't preclude you, of course. I mean, I, it makes a lot of sense, interestingly, or not, but before 2001, we did, in our land use code, they were called accessory dwellings. I don't have...
But you're saying essentially, trust us, we mean they're the same thing?
They are. I mean, they're, it's an interchangeable name, they're called that, I mean, it's a national thing.
In code, where?
Not in our land use code, but it's...
Okay, that's, if I could, and I don't mean to interrupt, that's the specifics I mean. If we're gonna have clear and objective definitions for things as we move forward, which has been, as you know, a pretty important piece of this stuff for me, I, I want us to be as clear as possible with this stuff, about what our definitions are. What does detached mean? What is, uh, uh, you know, what is attached and what is detached? Because in our, in this, in 1051, it's not at all clear. And it needs to be here, and I'm not sure that what we had coming forward is at all clear. Neighbors gave us different ideas. And what does secondary dwelling units mean, or dwelling, comma, secondary? So, there's a lot of pieces of this that, um, uh, we're taking kind of a loose approach at one, at one point, and then we're taking a very prescriptive approach in a different way, and I'd like us to be, um, as, as close to the same approach with both as possible, number one. And number two, uh, while I'm in favor of the idea of making it more, making it easier to, um, to build more secondary dwelling units, there are a couple of things I'm not interested in doing. I'm not interested in destroying any of the property right protections incumbent in, in R1, as they, as it exists right now, or backdoor redefining R1 in the process of how we talk about this, and whether or not we count that second building as a dwelling when it comes to density calculations, or not. And so, these pieces, I think, need much greater clarity and greater conversation. I'm not interested in defining down, and the square footage of R1 maximums, and by doing so, changing the calculation of maximum allowable on R1. So I, I wanna be sure that this doesn't do that. I also, when we get to the point of, of, of discussing incentives for SDCs, I don't want it just pertaining to SDUs, but any small cottage, groups of small cottage clusters, and, and other types of housing. So I don't want to get too prescribed in the SDU conversation, that we're only talking about those when we get to SDC credits. I, I don't know if that helps you entirely with what we're trying to do. I've run out of time, I guess I will need a second round.
I wanna make one quick clarification, in the ordinances before you, there are no changes proposed to R1 low-density residential development standards. I just, I wanna make that clear for everybody in the room, just so you have that information.
Thank you. Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, with the, the vigor and the certainty that folks who talk to me about this issue on both sides of it, I thought for certain there was a lot more to this than just, uh, one paragraph in, in HB 1051. So I went back and, which is... So I went back and, which is actually only one sentence, really long sentence, but, so I went back and read 1051, and indeed, that's it. That's the only thing in there. And it doesn't define what all these things mean, it doesn't hardly say anything. And there was almost no, if not, almost no legislative history or debate on the floor of the House and the Senate, so we don't have the benefit of that. And so we're left with trying to interpret this without a lot of good information. And so it's quite murky, but a lot of certainty on either side of this conversation. I like the definitions that City Attorney put forth about what citing and design standards are, but I agree with Counselor Clark, I think we need to go a little further than that. The second ordinance that we have here adds as the definition of secondary dwelling right out of the legislation, this is right out of the legislation again, "an interior, comma, attached or detached residential structure is used in connection with or that is accessory to a single-family dwelling." Well, maybe somebody knows what that means, but I don't. And I think that needs to be bolstered as well. While it's that, sentence probably needs to stay in here, I think we need to be more clear about our definitions in all of this stuff, because that's my primary concern with this, with HB, SB 1051, is that it didn't define it enough, it didn't talk about it. And so we're left with some really big, ugly issues, which is why we've kind of punted to Phase Two. And on these big issues, I think the two biggest issues are going to be owner occupancy and parking. Yet again, the City Council spends a whole lot of time talking about parking. And so I think that we need to spend some time talking about that. I also think we need, when we come back on May 23rd, a better flushed-out sense of what Phase Two is going to look like, and how long it's going to take. And I know we're having a community panel bring back and inform us about their opinion about that stuff on June 11th. Not that, without including that, I think we still need to have a timeline about what we want to talk about, when we're going to talk about it, and how that's going to play out a little bit more, before I feel comfortable moving forward on this. Because Phase Two is where we're going to have the meaty discussions about this, apparently. And, and so I would appreciate that kind of definitional clarity and timeline clarity for Phase Two.
Okay, Counselor Semple.
Thank you, I agree with Counselor Clark and Counselor Zelenka. I think it would be very helpful to call them the same. One of the confusions I have is two different definitions. An accessory building in the ordinance we're looking at, we're going to vote on tonight but aren't, the addition is a secondary dwelling is not an accessory building. Why not? Can an accessory building also be slept in? So that's a really basic question I don't understand. You know, and is subordinate clear? Is, what was the other word they use, combined? And I just want to make sure that what we say, an accessory building and a secondary dwelling unit, we make sure we know exactly what we're talking about, exactly what kind of buildings, and, you know, be really specific. I think that would be helpful. So to have some suggestions about doing that would help me out.
Counselor Soret.
Thank you, yeah. Counselor Semple mentioned one of the specific things I was going to say, too, that there's a, although it may be clear to the land use attorney and the planners for other folks reading, there's contradictions. So we say a secondary dwelling unit is not an accessory building, but then the state is using the term accessory dwelling unit. So if we're using those terms interchangeable, that, that creates a point of confusion. I, you know, I wonder if we could just stipulate that for the purposes of our ordinance, we use those terms interchangeably, that, that could be one way to get at it. But then in the second ordinance, you know, it defines a dwelling, secondary, an interior attached or detached residential structure that is used in connection with or that is accessory to a single-family dwelling. So it does create this, again, contradictions that become confusing. So I think that's something that I think we're all, it's a theme of finding a way to accommodate the ordinance language that we need while finding a way to eliminate those kind of confusing contradictions. And I would also appreciate at this follow-up work session, some, a little more depth around the Phase Two, and what kind of elements we think may be included. I know that's subject to a lot of process still, but just so folks who are paying attention to this conversation can kind of forecast what's going to be up next.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. As we've talked about in many of these sessions, the thing that's most important to me is achieving clarity and certainty. And what I'm hearing a lot here is that there's still a great deal of lack of clarity about exactly what we're talking about. And I agree with everybody here. We need to set on one term and use it. I don't care what the state does, I don't care what the federal government does, I don't want to, I don't care what the people on Mars do. We need to, in this town, have a single set of vocabulary that we use. I agree. Accessory dwelling unit. I think that's pretty clear. It's not an accessory building, it's a dwelling unit. And so I think if we can agree on a term, I think that would be good. And I think what we're going to need to do is work our way, step by step, through what the certainties are around building accessory dwelling units. Because I think, as has been important to me, we're getting to the 10,000-foot level of, you know, should it be this much space or that much space, or should it be owner occupied, or should the parking be here, whatever? And we still haven't really reached certainty on the degree to which we want to make it easier to build accessory dwelling units. I think that's still a question. And if we do want to make it easier to build them, where do we want to make it easier to build them? So I think we have to wrestle to some degree with a few of the higher-altitude questions, even as we also wrestle with the 10,000-foot questions. So it does say it needs to be a little bit more detailed conversation. So some of the things I would need would be, what are some of the things that we have on the books right now that we say are making it easy to build accessory dwelling units? I would also want to know at the same time, what are some of those things that are currently on the books that are impediments to building accessory dwelling units? If not specifically in response to Bill 1051, which I agree is baloney, because it is so brief, but in the spirit of what I think Senate Bill 1051 was trying to do, was to make it easier to build units. What are the impediments right now? What are the structural difficulties in building accessory dwelling units in different parts of town? Because I keep hearing people say, it's easy, it's hard, it's easy, it's hard, but I don't have the specifics. So even if we could identify what some of those specifics are, that would, that would be helpful for me. So I want to have a high-level conversation. Do we indeed want to make it easier? And if so, where and how? And then a lower-level conversation, what are the specific obstacles and impediments to building accessory dwelling units? What do they look like? And do we need to change them, or do we need to leave them the same? So it's at two levels, but they intertwine, they help. But my goal is I want clarity and certainty.
I actually want to weigh in a couple of things. The first piece is that, you know, I guess I have a little problem with the question about, do we want to make SDUs easier? I think that 1051 was designed to remove barriers, and so that's the state law. And so we can have some conversations around how closely we adhere to our interpretation of that state law, but, you know, I don't think that this is, I mean, I think it's a, it's our determining legally how, how hard and fast we want to interpret that state law. And so maybe that's to your point, but I don't see it as, do we want it? We have been told that this is the state law, and we need to comply by July 1st. So I think we have to hold that place for that. As far as Phase Two, my sort of working, working plan, I'll just play it out a little bit more completely for folks, has been that I am proposing on July 11th that we would use the entire 90 minutes of a, of what would normally be a work session as a workshop instead. So council, planning staff, and then we would invite eight to 10 representatives of the community to come together in a facilitated process and talk about that whole universe of pressure points around secondary dwelling units. So we have them listed in the legislation, they're sort of specific things about the design standards, about height and setbacks and so on, there are the specific questions around parking and homeownership, and what's the third one that's always grabbing me?
Owner occupancy.
Owner occupancy, owner occupancy and parking, and, so we, we know what those, that specific checklist is. We have heard through the public hearing, and we've heard from a lot of correspondence with the council people, various concerns and interpretations over how we're doing it. So the goal of that workshop is to get all of those concerns out there, and I am proposing to invite leadership from the Neighborhood Leadership Council, and then from other, other bodies who represent, so Better Housing Together can select AARP, other people that they're working with, I'm looking for the Housing Policy Board has talked about bringing people into that meeting that might represent tenant interests and tenant rights. So the goal of that beginning workshop is not for us to debate all of those things, but for us to develop that whole list of things that we think we need to, to talk about. And I, but I do think that the next step, part of that would be defined by that July, June 11th workshop, but the next step would be then to take that larger list of issues and, and pick those ones that are absolutely critical for us to, to hash out and come up with some definitive responses, where we need to fix our code or not. And, and I think I agree, come up with a timeline, because I don't think this is a process that should go on for a year. I think it's a process that we need to work with some deliberate speed. My understanding, to put it out there, is that, you know, by July 1st, whatever happens July 1st, you know, nothing specifically happens, but someone could easily file an appeal for whatever decision we have made on July 2nd. And so I think our goal is to not be too exposed for too long without having made some definitive responses to this Senate bill. So that is just my suggestion to all of you, is when you come back in a week, that it's fairly definitive, and we're not playing this out too much longer. Comments? Alan?
Go ahead, and then I just want to...
Okay.
...five for next week.
Oh, okay. Mine's not related to that. So, I mean, it is related to that, so I wanted you to hear it before you said something. I like the June 11th workshop ideas laid out by the mayor, I think that's appropriate. So for me, to get there and have a conversation about that stuff, some of these issues that we are punting to Phase Two and taking up in that space are, need to be clarified for me as to why they're not included in Phase One. So issues like owner-occupied parking, minimum lot size, and some of the other design issues, I think they are controversial enough. It's not at all clear that they're required to be in Phase One, so I agree with that. So people can understand, and I can understand a little bit better about why is it there in Phase Two and not included in Phase One? And then we'll have a more robust conversation about those issues and decide on them in Phase Two, which I hope will be a constrained process and not a laid-out one. I shouldn't think this would take more than a couple of months to completely get done with. If we put a timeline on it and a deadline, we'll meet it. That's my experience with why deadlines are good. So I hope we'll think of that, too, when we come back on the 23rd, and the staff brings back more about what Phase Two looks like.
Manager?
I just want to make sure for expectations for next week, as well as thank you for mentioning timelines, because I think we'll, maybe we can help set some expectations around that, too. For next week, Counselor Pryor, what I heard you say was about the barriers to being able to develop SDUs, and we'll be able to come up with a few...
ADUs.
ADU.
Well, we got to get here with...
Accessory buildings. So whatever we want to, whatever we want to call these things. My concern will be is, I think from our perspective, an important part of Phase Two is actually identifying barriers, if that, and then figuring out which ones the council would want to try to work through, and then do that. And so I think what we can come back with in a week, maybe be a few ideas, but probably not an exhaustive list of barriers, so there might be just a few that we think about, some that have already been talked about. I think with respect also for next week, for Counselor Zelenka, there are some things that people already know, have mentioned about, why aren't they in Phase One when we suggested Phase Two? And so some of those we can talk about, but there's probably a whole lot of other things that people wish were in Phase One that I don't know if we're going to be able to divine which ones people are most interested in, other than those few that have already been talked about. So we'll probably talk about that. It's, I think it'll take much longer than two months, primarily because of just staff capacity. As you know, our, our planning folks are working on any numbers of dozens of things that are obviously extremely high priority. And so we'll come back with that timeline, but I suspect the timeline will go well into the fall. So I just want to make sure people recognize that if this is one of those, let's do it much quicker, then we probably need to talk about what else does or doesn't happen on the same timelines we've talked about. So I'm just foreshadowing that as well.
Just in response to that, the reason I said two months is because that's about how much time we have left before summer break. And if we didn't get it done by then, we would be into the fall. But if that's not realistic, that's not realistic.
Counselor Clark?
Just for the pieces that the council doesn't decide are important for Phase One, and so there's...
Yeah.
So, yeah, so...
Counselor Clark?
Did you say June 11th or July 11th? I heard both, so I went...
June 11th.
Okay. For clarity, we got June 11th. I also heard you say you were going to involve neighborhood leadership in this. I encourage staff to continue to do that. And that's part of why we're not moving more smoothly here, is because there are folks who, I think, that may not feel heard in this process. Number three, I, I heard you talk about a group of specially picked folks who include some others. There was a list of, when you said Better Housing Together, that's great, they'll be involved. A list was read earlier, and I may be wrong about this, I may be misinformed, but I think there were, there were two or three of those folks listed as a part of that effort who may not be anymore. And so I would hope, I guess, that the people who actually build secondary dwelling units and design them, home builders, other...
Absolutely.
Will be involved in that process. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I will say, so the way we have begun this is to begin to, so working with staff on outreach to the Neighborhood Leadership Council, beginning to have conversations with some of those sort of umbrella groups about who might want to represent. And so I do invite counselors, if you have someone that you think is being left out of this conversation, who should be, you can please let me know. Okay, are we done? Comments? All right.
I believe so.
Thank you all, that closes the meeting. Thank you.